We'll call over to the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. And I believe Craig is going to lead his impaired.
Let's pray. Father, we just pray for a good meeting tonight and ask for your guidance and wisdom as we go over the new budget and just try to work out things that are best for the city of Genesee, oh Father. We thank you for the people that are here and bless them. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Page your roll call.
Rothschilds, Kennett, Swanson.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Rudehouse. James.
Here.
Samowski.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next on the agenda would be public comments related to agenda items. City ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes. During public comment, there can be no debate or action by the city council at this time. And it looks like you got nothing, okay. Moving on, mayor's comments. I have none at this time. City council comments, any members of the council? Okay, city administrator comments, Brandon.
Hey, some quick reminders. Petition filing is going on right now, this week, the final day to file for city elections. For the election being held next March in 2026 is next Monday at 5:00 PM is the deadline for filings. Another reminder, the remaining disposal site days out at Prairie Park left in year 2025 are November 8th, November 22nd, and December 6th. This is on Saturdays from 8:00 AM until noon at the site. Yard Waste curbside stickers are half price in the month of November at City Hall. You can come and purchase them here. The final curbside pickup for yard waste is the week of November 24th, just as a reminder to everybody. We're going to bring up Eric to talk about the Stewart Street substation real quick. Just give you some notes on what's going on there.
This might take some time. Just kidding. So last week, October 22nd, the main breaker at Stewart Street opened up basically right after we got done doing a relay project. At first, we thought that it was the relay settings that were bad. Came to find out that what is actually bad is what's called a PT, a potential transformer, that takes the voltage down from 40,000 volts to secondary voltage around 115. What this PT, and this is it right here, what this PT was showing was over 133 volts, when it should be reading around 118 volts. So the relay works, we know that, but that's what opened up the breaker. Unfortunately, this needs to be replaced. It's at the end of life, it is 50 years old. So we went out and got quotes. Bad news is, it's 34 weeks to get a PT. Good news is, we had found one that was built in 2020 and has never been used, and we have on the way. Hopefully, next week, we will have it, and then we'll work with the electrical contractors to get it actually up and running. When I brought this to Brandon, we really thought this was going to be very expensive. It is reasonably priced, we're around $10,000 for the PT itself, which we were thinking closer to 50 to $60,000.
Doesn't matter on the age, doesn't matter when the bulbs is.
It's never been used, so we'll do the same thing we always do. We have a 12-month warranty once we purchase it, since it's brand-new. It's been tested. When we get it here on-site, electrical contractors will test it, and we'll get that substation back online. Currently, we are running out of the power plant sub, so if we do have disruption in the circuit, we will affect more people because we are in quadrants like we normally are. We do still have reclosures out there, but you may see that, you know, larger areas are affected because we only actually have two circuits that are coming out of the power plant. But we do have reclosures on there, so hopefully, it hits the reclosure first and goes. But if it hits in between the reclosure and the main breaker, then more people will be affected. There's only, that's the bus potential.
That where we are powered or something.
So that was last week, we lost it about 9:06. As soon as it went out, my house was affected. I. 26 minutes. So we kind of knew what we were looking at, especially when that sub opened. Like we said, we just got done doing the relay replacement project that day. Sub was online, it had been online for 10 hours. We didn't think anything of it. But the relay works because if it's showing 133 volts, they shouldn't have tripped. But we shouldn't have seen that high a voltage when our bus voltage wasn't that high. This is on Stewart Street. So I just kind of wanted to give you an update on what was going on. We'll move forward.
So that didn't affect everybody, because I know my mom on Meadow had power, but a half a block over on Aldridge did not.
Yeah, so the way that we are split up in the circuits right now, Aldridge is part of the conversion project, and that is being fed through the north loop out of Stewart Street, where Meadow is fed from north loop out of the power plant. So only the customers that are on the substation, so basically, that's kind of hard to explain. Oakwood, west, and north and south. So anything that was west of Oakwood, all the way from Prairie Park to Richmond, or Countryman, or Richmond Hill, Richmond. No.
You said west.
West. Yeah, so. Everyone west was, everyone east wasn't. Yeah.
You got an hour to figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, and then finally, we talked in the last meeting about the budget book. Jamie, if you want to give a couple of quick notes on the budget book.
Yeah, so the budget book that gets printed out of Civic, there is a known bug issue with Civic that when it prints the name of the previous fund report, it'll show up on there, but the fund account numbers are correct. So if you look at the account numbers, those are all correct in there. And Civic is no, they're aware of it, and it is a low priority. And those account numbers will be on like the bills, so if you're wondering, it's like the first page of the bills, it shows which account numbers reflect with which. So general fund being 01, water being 30, wastewater.
Paul, do you have anything on the matter?
No.
Okay, perfect. Brandon, anything else? Okay, moving on, next on the agenda, item number eight in our administration, 8.1 would be the 2026 budget presentation.
Hey, so tonight is the first look at the 2026 fiscal year budget. Jamie will give a high-level overview of the budget, and we're happy to take any questions that anybody has after your review of the document. Just a reminder that we did do the, traditionally, we've done capital project planning and first review with this presentation of the budget book. We did capital project planning with the water worth process starting this past August, so we can shore up those rates. So we do have that attached in here if we need to bring up any of the capital project plans or anybody wants to look at that. But we're not going to run through every project in detail again unless you guys want to talk about any of them. Sure, be happy to. So with that, let Jamie kind of run into the budget book, and we'll talk through things. Just stop us if you want to look at anything in more detail.
All right, so as I go through the budget book, I'm really going to just focus on things that are different from previous years. So if it's just like small minor amounts where it's like for sales tax, I have for us budgeted to take in a little bit more. So little things like that, I'm not going to highlight over unless you guys want me to, which I absolutely can. And I'll try to make it bigger, let's see how I make this bigger.
I have one question, what's the personal property replacement?
That is typically going to go into the police fund, so if you saw it into the general fund, the rest of it goes into the police fund to cover expenses for them. So I have to report it to the pension board and how much we're going to spend on that to them.
So it's 10?
10 days.
Because your budget, your guys are on the budget officer system.
And not the appropriation. Okay. I was like, oh my gosh.
So we can maintain our schedule.
And for city code Genesee, it's a 10-day option under the budget officer selection, so you want to challenge 10 days.
I was getting nervous, I was like, I swear that it's that, but I mean.
She's got a few minutes, she doesn't have to worry about the newspaper missing.
Yes. Okay, so for the tax, the tax line items, again, I budgeted for a 4.99. The tax levy will come up after the budget passes, so in the event we do change that, we can amend the budget if needed, but we have to pass the budget before we pass the tax levy. And the line items for that that are really affected with that is I increased the police pension line item to cover the request from the pension board, and then the bond payment. And then I moved up to stay in line with emergency services and street and roads. That I increased for that. So that's going to be taxed, the things that are different from your sales tax. So local use is typically like car sales. Anything else fall under there? Cigarettes and that doesn't fall under, but it's things that are not typically your sales tax items. We don't really get very much from that. All right, so for the salaries, this is going to be the same with every fund. Salaries are budgeted with negotiated increase, unions of 3%. So you'll see that in here being reflected. Some of them might show a little bit change of being down in salaries and health, and that is particularly because we have people that are new, since we've had a couple people retire, so their salaries are a bit lower, and/or they don't take health insurance. So there's a lot of new employees that don't take health insurance. And so because of that, I have reduced a couple of the line items for that. You look confused, Paul.
Yes.
Their spouse has that insurance or insurance they prefer over ours.
Yeah, the young one.
They're young enough to be on their parents'. And we passed in contracts too, there's incentives to not take our insurance. That was one of the changes we made in the contracts. What's that? A financial monetary incentive if they have the ability to go on their spouse's plan. Yeah, so.
No, you're fine. So for health, our numbers did come back, and so some of them you will see a little bit higher, some of them lower, depending on where people's election is. But our increase for health, you'll see in some of those funds, they have increased because of the numbers that have come back due to health costs rising in the industry, so. We did budget for professional services a little bit more than normal, and that is for consulting services for potential tip district. And then I just kind of wanted to highlight that this is the last year for our bond payment for this current building that we're in. Otherwise, all of these transfers are to cover the other funds, and it shows you which funds, inspections, public works, cemetery, parks, and public safety. For the community development, we did increase for fireworks, so it's a big year for the US this next year, so we're increasing that fund to 45,000.
Is that to cover fireworks?
It is for our Thrill on the Hill event, correct. Craig, will you use your mic, please?
Yes, sorry.
It is our 250th year.
Yeah, it is.
Hey, I'm just going to say it now, but we went to the last football game at home, and somebody paid for fireworks, and they were fantastic. So I'd contact whoever the boosters were for the football team and see who did the fireworks.
It's the same vendor that we use.
Why did we get crappy ones and they, can I not say that? And they got the good ones. I mean, they were spiraling all over the place and different, wasn't it?
It's the same individual, I can ask him. I can. I would love to.
Where do you watch the fireworks from at the 4th of July?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Go right up where they light them. No, 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 no. These were spiraling, and they're going all over the place.
I'm not disputing that, but from someone that grew up in Richmond Hill, the difference of watching him from that residence that I remember to now participating in the events on the actual Thrill the Hill grounds as the mayor, it's night and day difference.
Yeah, I disagree, I disagree.
I tell a lot of people that, and I encourage everybody, once they should take the show in up there, it's much different. Yeah, and I think Jamie will take care of it.
Yes, I would appreciate you asking new ones, because I don't believe they were the same ones as you had, regardless of where I see them. I didn't see anything like what I saw at the football game, thank you.
In the interest of meeting your schedule, I suggest we move along, Craig.
Second.
So the next portion of the general fund is the council, and really, the only amounts that are increased here are salaries, and that was due to the recommended salary increase for those individuals coming up. And then we did increase for training that way in case anybody else has interest in going to IML. And so this, and I'll come, I'll kind of come back to this, but this is where it shows the overall expenses over revenues. And I know it looks like we're dipping into the general fund a lot, but I want, as we go through the further into the different ones, you'll see that it is to cover North State Street. Instead of doing a bonded project, we are dipping into the funds that we have on hand. We still will be healthy, you can see that we're almost at 7.5 million, but to cover the second phase of that project.
Not only the funds that we have, but the actual intent of what these funds were established, set aside for, is this type of scenario.
Correct. Inspections is pretty typical, we didn't really increase any line item other than the normal salaries and health insurance line items. Stop me if you want me to go slower on the different ones.
Nope.
The next one is street, again, so you'll notice how I did increase some of the street bridge just to cover staying up with the rate on that tax levy. And then just some of the big ones on here, you'll notice the significant one in street maintenance, that is to actually be for the state street project, the second phase of it, which is where the majority of that 800,000 is coming from. And then for each of the different departments, we have our insurance that I believe you guys are going to approve today, IML or MA. There was a slight increase on that, so that increase is shown here underneath the insurance, general insurance line item.
Just under 3%.
Sorry, I have notes on my spreadsheet. For cemetery, it's pretty much similar to in years past, the revenues over expenses, other than the normal increase that was approved for salaries and the health insurance. And then public works, parks. The main thing in here is we do have budgeted for preliminary design for Richmond Hill, and that is.
For professional services? There are fireworks. I'm telling you, it was a football game, you'd agree with me.
That one is underneath line item, the professional services, yeah. So we do have a little bit budgeted there, it's to work for a potential grant for the soccer.
Restroom facility.
Restroom area.
Could be opportunities that we want to be prepared to look at. To the west, the far west end of the park back there. That original. Yeah, yeah.
Do they add into the main bathrooms of the park?
Yeah, no, we have. We did quite a bit of improvement to them, yeah. It's the existing structure still, but I mean, we did quite a bit of improvement to it.
If you save for the fireworks, you'd go.
Yeah, that one in the far back, Chad, that was built in the 90s, probably, early 90s, yeah.
You would see new fireworks, you'd agree.
Sounds like you're right. But no, we redid those as part of the Richmond Hill, we repainted it.
Yeah, we did some other work since then, too.
All right, next is public safety, and again, I did talk about how I increased on the police protection, property tax line item, and the police pension line item for revenues, and that is to cover the expense line items of our employer contribution, which they requested. It was actually significantly low considering other years, where they requested about 17,000 more than last year, which some years it's been 100-plus thousand more, so that was good.
What was the cannabis tax?
That's what we collect from all cannabis sales within the state of Illinois. They portion it off to the different municipalities. And then any line item that has like a fundraising, the offset for the fundraising or donations is exactly the same. So if I was going to put in there for fundraising or shop at the cop for 1,500, the expense I put in there for 1,500, because we will typically get donations in to cover all the expenses that we have. For public safety, I think one of the only differences for expenses that are a little bit out of the norm for them as usual is underneath operating, they budgeted for ammunition. And so normally, they only budget like 2,500, and they have budgeted for 14,000.
Wasn't much. She hates.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I was.
The operating.
The operation's gone up, and we asked the range officers to do more. The process in the past has been stand there and shoot a piece of paper, the law partner of the state, who asks them to do additional training for the officers beyond what is just the minimum mandatory.
2,500 to 14,000?
We get it, we actually get it fairly cheap, we have a business town that gets it to us for their price, and actually, that's very beating.
Yeah, I mean, it could be easily be $30 a box retail. Yeah.
Otherwise, the PD's expenses were similar as previous years. And that is the end of the general fund. So I'll take any questions, anybody has. Again, just kind of explaining the deficit, why we are going to dip into the fund balances to truly cover the project for North State Street instead of bonding.
Yes, that's kudos to us in the past several years to put us in a position to be able to do so.
Okay, these next couple accounts are police accounts. They're typically budgeted the exact same every year, so we have our A police, B police, and D police. There's like the drug fund and DUI fund, and a lot of the times, the only thing that occurs in any of these is in the drug fund, and typically, it's just to pay for canine expenses. And those are pretty much the same as in previous years. The next few ones are workman's comp, social security, and IMRF, and these are all budgeted accounts, fund accounts specifically for the general fund employees. So on the tax levy, we levy to pay these expenses, and then the expenses occur in the fund. So you'll see that like for workman's comp, it's to cover the workman's comp for all general fund employees, the same goes for social security and IMRF. Questions on those? Okay, the next one is when we did our bond for this building, we had to set up a separate fund to show the monies and the monies out. So every year, I transfer into this fund, and then we make payments out of this fund. So that is all that is occurring in this fund. Cemetery, there is nothing occurring other than investment income coming in. For MFT, there aren't a whole lot of expenses planned to come out of this because we used a lot of these funds for the sidewalk over on Chicago Street, so just trying to rebuild them, we'll have the allotments come in, and then just street lighting expenses go out. For the fuel depot, I would say the main thing with this is we charge our employees, we charge them an increase to get fuel up above what we pay for it, just to manage some of the maintenance that we have in here. Otherwise, we will end with an increase of 11,000. All right, hotel motel. So in hotel motel, the revenues are pretty, they're going to be pretty much the same. We do have a couple new Airbnbs, but they don't really bring in a significant amount to increase this amount at all. And we also have our revenues come in from the chamber for chamber events, and those are what we typically put in an ordinance or a resolution annually for them. So I have those in here, but we do have budgeted for Labor Day concert, an event, I should say concert, an event, a digital sign and mat boards underneath the miscellaneous expenses. So those are new things this year for that. There is a Labor Day event slash concert, which we are working with Central Bank at Richmond Hill. And then the digital sign, and then.
It was actually a request made by Ann, or not necessarily Ann, but Ann's request for a marquee or a feature in the community where there would be other ways to source, so we've only preliminary looked into this. We haven't made any decisions or any commitments to bring to council, but in the event, we could come up with something that was financially sensible, and that would satisfy that, that we would then bring that forward. Obviously, it needs to be thought about budget-wise.
Put some money in the budget for it, but that's not a done deal. We haven't.
not a done deal. We haven't.
It's far from.
So those are, the Chamber of Commerce has had an initiative to bring. I don't know how to describe them other than map boards, like attractive black metal to blend in with our our street lighting posts. Boards where you could open up glass and put maps of the downtown or features of downtown informational type boards and.
Can't they scan the QR codes on the posters or the murals and do that?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. It's just an initiative that is out there that we put some money into this in case that comes before the council as something that we want to participate in. It's been a chamber initiative for for the past year. Don't know if it'll move forward in 26 or not due to their budget as well, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to kind of remind everybody, hotel motel funds can only be used for funds to bring people into the community.
Is there a certain tax on them?
In our ordinance, yeah, we tax them a 5% tax on their hotel motel gross receipts that they submit. Well, they get their own, they pay their own tax that they might have for the state, but then we also have one on top of that. Or depends on what they, I guess, what they have in the city that.
Yeah, it's, I don't know if we're already past that section or not. Capital. It is in there. We are looking in 2026 to move forward with a camera downtown at that statue in the Tree Plaza area. And we'll get more into that next year. There is some money set aside there, though. Alderman Kennett is going to donate some of that equipment. So we'll have, it'll be very limited expenses for us is what's. Downtown TIF. Okay, we'll we'll get to that.
They're very expensive, what we're finding. So but it's, we're looking into it. So we're starting the. Yeah.
The next fund is for economic development, and we really haven't done a whole lot out of this. Really, we budget this every year, but it can be used for anything that we want to incentivize for economic development in the community. Most recently, which has been a quite a few years, it was for Save-A-Lot. Then the next fund is revolving loan. And I do have $30,000 budgeted to expend for revolving loan. And really, it just depends on what type of type of interest we have and they may come in with a request for 50,000 or 20,000. I just don't really ever know. So I put in that 30,000 to budget. All right, the electric fund, the revenues are, if you remember, when we went through Waterworth, a lot of those are directly from Waterworth. The same goes for water and wastewater. So based on the rates that they had, those numbers we input in there. Otherwise, the other revenues are just predicted revenues that are going to come in from employee health reimbursement, materials sold.
Yeah, I already increased the revenues about three and a half percent, which is very similar to what we had passed with other.
And then when we go down to expenses, I have, just kind of as a note, I feel like we get this every year on what bonds are going to fall off soon. So the 2016 A bond, I have that as a last payment being in 2027. Otherwise, that is the bond payment that we do have to make. And then for electric, again, a lot of the main increases are your salaries and health insurance.
Purchase power went up. I believe we went up 3% on that. We are seeing energy costs creep up a little bit, so we did add a little bit to that. Most of the budget is very similar to what it is last year without, you know, some of the salaries. Some of the line items had gone up by 3%, like we had seen in Waterworth. Some of them did not because, you know, we don't usually tap into those funds as much. But relatively, it's very similar to these years.
And then you'll notice that his budget, Electric's budget, we are dipping into fund balance 100,000, but one of those items is typically not in the norm for capital projects. And that is the rate study that we're going to do. The or the planning study, sorry. That came in at 150,000, so that's an expense that we wouldn't.
150,000 just for a study?
This is what we had talked about when I gave the power plan presentation on putting the utility in the best position that we can and taking a, you know, having someone come in, have an outside look and seeing what priorities we need to take and what steps we need to take for our customers, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now.
And how long is the study going to take to do?
It'll probably take, you know, about a part of the 26. The plan is to make, get it done in 26 so that we have it for budgeting in 27. So if anything that's in our capital projects need to be moved around, we can do that.
Eric, if the last one was 96, if I remember correctly. So it's almost 30 years. So I mean, if you think about. But I also think when we reviewed the document produced in 96, I thought we all, at least I found it insightful for the fact that some of the things that were pointed out were actually implemented and integrated. So I mean.
Most of the stuff that in the 96 study.
Yeah.
And what do we pay Waterworth? What do we pay them?
Well, Waterworth is for rates.
I know. I didn't ask that. I know what it's about. 60,000 for five years. That's cheap. 150,000 for our study.
So what the planning study does is looks at the utility as a whole. It looks at power generation. It looks at transformers or substations or transmission line or distribution system. And what is best to serve our customers? And that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, and I think back to the night we had that discussion after your presentation and I point to James had a lot of insightful thoughts and and, you know, ideas and things when we talked about the electric utility as far as sharing of power, distribution of power and all those things. So I think anything we can do to put us in the most powerful position of information on our side is important to the community and our, the health and longevity of our utility as well.
I agree. I'm just, it's kind of a sticker shock.
Yeah.
That's the part. I agree with what you want to do. It's just, that's a lot of money.
Yes, there is a lot of things going on right now in the utility world for reliability. There's different switches out there. Instead of using a fuse that blows once, they have fuses that actually reclose back in. So not only does that save the customer from an outage, it also saves us from having to call a line now because that fuse went back in because it was a squirrel that, you know, got in between the ground and the primary and blew the fuse. Well, if that, we know that's what it is. That fuse recloses, powers back on.
So the study will do that kind of thing and bring us back to tell us how much we have to put into, how much we're going to save?
Give us the roadmap that we need to create some of that stuff.
All right, the next fund is really an in and out fund. It is separate from the electric fund because it's meter deposits. And those are paid back when people move their residence or they are in good standing. So that's why that is kept separate on there. Then we have refus and you'll notice the increase here and that's due to the rate increase that we implemented. Otherwise, the expenses are pretty similar and we are going to end 8,000 to the good in the refuse account. For water, again, the rates were taken from Waterworth from whatever we proposed as increases and I don't think anything else really, we have our infrastructure charge. You'll see that as a revenue. And that's just to cover the capital infrastructure down farther. For expenses, this first bond, it is the last payment for, it will be in 2026. And then the next bond, the last payment will be in 2027. Couple of the main changes you'll see in here are structures and improvements. I have it for exterior doors. Well, I mean, well hatches at both iron removal plants. So that is the increase there. And then on distribution, there is an increase. It's right here. And that increase is due to an insertion valves you put in on West Main. And then for the distribution in the road, there's an increase for rock and sand stockpiles. All right, so then we'll get down to the budget here. And again, we are going to dip into fund balance 358,000. But I want everybody to remember that we didn't do the North Water Tower. And so really, those are carryover expenses that we'll expend in this next year. Keep going. Then similar to electric, we have water deposits that our residents pay and it works the same way. Once they move, they get their deposit back and or when they're in good standing after the time that they have to be for good standing, depending on if they're a renter or not. That's why that is kept separate. For wastewater, again, the revenues were pulled from Waterworth. I have our, you guys are going to be really excited about this one. Our wastewater treatment plant EPA will be paid off in 2042. Yes, that's correct. Our last EPA loan that we had to pay off last year, so. I do have kind of a side note on here for chemicals, the increase is due to disinfection costs going up. And then underneath, de-watering is increasing and that is right here. Slightly for land fees, landfill fees for sludge. And then they are also hitting into fund balance. But this one is for engineering or phosphorus removal mandates that we do have to comply with.
Contact your congressman.
So Article 36 is another police account. It's similar to every other year as far as budgeting. Then we're going to get into tip. So the tip 82 investor, primarily the funds that we get in, we also expend back because of our Save-A-Lot agreement. So you'll notice that the fund doesn't really grow a whole lot year after year just because we pay them almost entirety of what we get back in property taxes. Right, but we still have an agreement with the land development. I want to say it's set to 2031. The next the next tip is the Route 6. We do have planned in here to spend some of the monies on infrastructure improvements. We do have to either expend all of the monies in this tip and or give it back to the taxing bodies. So we do have some potential future needs for infrastructure improvements in that area. For the downtown tip, this is where we talked about the camera. So we have in here for expenses underneath the miscellaneous expenses, we have safety planners. Safety planners, those are to help prevent a vehicle from going into, say, State Street Market and.
Don't worry, she didn't say planners, planters.
Planters, yes.
No more planners.
So what it is, is we have those, we have the concrete blocks across the roads. Where we lack, we believe, is the sidewalks. So rather than getting barricade equipment on the sidewalk, we were looking at planters and or concrete fences that will be, prevent the cars from driving around or barricading the sidewalks.
And we have those expensed under, or planning to be budgeted under there and then the camera for downtown. Also is $50,000 budgeted for facade. And again, it really just depends on who submits facade improvements come in, but it does benefit the fund because property taxes will typically go up when you improve buildings around that area. And then our development agreements, we have two development agreements. One is today's builders and then the other one is the Maple Premier Storage.
Oh, yeah, right, right there on the same, yeah.
And then in the South 82, we don't really have anything expected out of the norm for the year. So there's not really a whole lot going on in that tip. But we do have monies that will have to be extended by the time end of that tip expires or we'll have to give them back to the taxing bodies.
But we're very hopeful that something will hit.
They're all around 2030.
Wish I would have brought those dates, but they're 2030 to 2031. Two of them are 2030 and two are 2031, I believe. I believe the tiffs are.
The Save-A-Lot tip and. That one's Route 6. Nothing touches it. It's like kind of, if you're looking for Brandon's office, it's kind of spread out around. So some of the parcels are included and others are not.
It's a goofy map, to be honest. Was Paula here? I don't know. Well, I didn't know. I mean, looking around, you're the most senior tenured council person.
Why are some included and some aren't? That's the question.
It's a highway corridor, you would think of.
People don't want to be included in the tip. You also have an eye on the United States Government that would be frozen. So if you don't think that there's any chance for redevelopment or any.
So if you don't think that there's any chance for redevelopment or any improvement, that is not, you know, that goes into the consideration where you want to use a TIP district as scalpel not a cudger. You don't paint with a fine TIP brush, not a broad. So it's an effort to try and identify the properties that could benefit the most from a governmental investment in infrastructure.
And that could make sense because some of those parcels at the time were probably thriving businesses.
Who don't need infrastructure.
Correct, yeah.
But remember, the.
Which is such change.
The TIPS intended to close a gap in the financing. Private sector says it costs too much money to invest in that property to bring something there. But if I, if you could help me with the infrastructure costs, then my return on investment would be sufficient for me to do it. And that's the idea, is that you take properties, identify them, and we say, they'll take the increment from the improved property to reinvest it in you for a limited period of time to close the financing gap. So not every property would want to do that.
I would assume that it's made somewhere. Thank you for the TIP history lesson.
All right, so then the next fund is capital fund for the general fund. And we kind of talked about these capital projects the last time, so I'm just going to kind of go into how we'll end. And we are, utilize some of those funds for, again, North State Street, but we are staying above the threshold that was recommended of a million dollars.
And I think maybe note our conversation today about the health of receiving that and it's, it's trended well. And that's an important factor to this, too, that being able to replenish this, we're in a strong position.
Yeah, yeah. We wanted to build up these funds, so we were able to actually do some of these projects and we haven't been able to do that.
Rather than always borrowing or borrowing money to do so.
And then the last fund on here is the health insurance fund. And it's, a lot of it's just really an in and out for retiree health insurance. Questions on anything within the budget?
Truthfully, it's impressive that so many things are staying flat. I mean, a few things went up a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's, I think it's a, it's a very comprehensive budget to get a lot of things done that we need to get done, do it within our means. And, you know, there were some adjustments made here or there, but I think in, in the scheme of a budget that size and the services we preside, those were really modest adjustments along the way. So I compliment the entire administration, they put a lot of work into this. They did.
That's it for tonight.
Second.
So the, there'll be a public hearing at the next meeting and then another look and hopefully we, the council will pass the budget at that meeting.
Okay, moving on, an eight point two under administration would be the consideration of R dash twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution regarding the intergovernmental cooperation contract with the IML Illinois Minutes Believe Management Association.
So this is an item that we do every year, renewing our agreement with IML RMA. This is for, they are our insurance carrier, they cover essentially our umbrella carrier, all of our liability insurance, our workers' comp, they cover all of our property, all of our equipment and assets in the city. We've been successful, at least since I've been around, at doing the min-max agreement. This is the option where we get a discount by paying a minimal amount. If we do have limitations on how much we can spend on claims, I haven't seen that since I've been around, since twenty sixteen, we stay well below the maximum threshold, but we're able to realize some savings by doing the min-max plan. And so recommendation is to move forward with the min-max plan again at three thirty-two, zero six four point six four. This is about just under a three percent increase over where we sit today with our cost of insurance.
Motion to recommend approval of our twenty-five sixteen to the city council meeting and place on the consent agenda.
Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by Samoski. What, Paul, you're on a roll, I like it. Roll call.
Swanson.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Rudehouse. James.
Yes.
Samoski.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point three hundred administration would be R dash twenty-five dash seventeen. Updates to the personnel policy manual.
Okay, there's three updates to our employee personnel manual that we need to shore up inside of the manual. You may remember back in January of twenty twenty-three, we passed the non-union compensation structure. This was to, if you reflect back to that meeting or that conversation, to pass wage ranges for non-union staff. It sets standards for how non-union staff would receive pay increases. The goal of this was to take away the subjective system of us coming into executive session and making subjective decisions about how to give pay increases to myself and the rest of the non-union team. Within that policy, we wrote it so that every three years I was to come back, or the city administrator to come back to the council to talk about the wage ranges and to take a look at those. This is just the wage range chart. It doesn't, we're not giving any extra individual pay increases, it's just changing the start and ending range compensation for each position, essentially to keep up with inflation as time goes. We don't want those charts to stay stagnant. If we have to hire a police chief in the future, you want a reliable starting and end ranging, end range for the council to act on when we go out for recruiting and to be able to direct that work. So the recommendation, my recommendation here is looking at CPI from twenty twenty-three through what is speculated to be CPI through twenty twenty-five, you're looking at about a nine percent change, about a three percent change each year. So the recommendation, and this part of the change is to increase the start and end range by nine percent on the scale. And then years of service increases, again, reflect back to the start of twenty twenty-three with the system. We talked about replacing this longevity pay system that we have done and are doing through twenty twenty-five with years of service increases. Talked about that being one of the valuable things that the council could act on to provide increases, much like our union contracts were at three, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years of service, that we value people staying and being loyal employees and that we would implement additional increases of the recommendation that we passed in last year's resolution was two percent on top of any general wage change. And so this is the last year that the longevity pay system will be in play, so we're recommending we need to remove that language from the handbook as the years of service increases go into effect in January of twenty twenty-six. And then the third change is the communications policy and associated protocol. You'll notice those changes in Exhibit A in the draft. These are changes we made in April this year, need to add them to the handbook. We do have this policy in our handbook. I think it's important that the council see this as well and we look at it. It just sets a standard that we put into play for how we communicate to you guys, how I communicate to the mayor, what we, what we post, how we send out alerts when there's emergencies in town, when there's outage situations, weather emergencies, police, public safety emergencies. And those standards are laid out for all of our staff to know how we properly follow the chain of command, who needs to be contacted with what. We made changes this year to this system because the police dispatch closed on third shift, so we had to alter some of those processes and it puts some additional responsibilities on myself and other staff members to act at night when there's not a dispatcher, if we have a widespread thing that needs to be communicated. So that's my lengthy review of the changes.
So we give them a years of service bonus plus the three percent or the rate of inflation or whatever it is bonus?
Yeah, that's correct. So the council passed a standard pay increase at the end of twenty twenty-four, in December of twenty twenty-four, there was the standard. We did a three-year system along with the union contracts at four, three, three for standard wage increases. And then the years of service is an additional factor put in. We're hitting year three in January of twenty twenty-six. We said this process would start when the policy was implemented in January of twenty twenty-three. So all employees that are still here and retained and have that longevity, hit that three-year marker for that two percent increase on top of the standard wage increase.
If it's four percent, then they'd get a six percent increase?
Yeah, so they'll get a three percent wage adjustment, so that will be calculated and then they'll get another two percent wage adjustment for that years of service increase.
Do normal businesses do this kind of thing?
Normal businesses.
Private businesses, I should say.
Again, we, we've been over this so many times that it's hard to draw that comparison because the private sector and the public sector, like it or not, are grossly different. And to remain a competitive employer, you have to at least resemble what other communities are doing in some capacity. So I understand, we've had this conversation many times, I understand your frustration with that. Unfortunately, you have to play cards with the hand you're dealt, not necessarily the hand you would like.
So, one for day, so they got a two percent.
Five, five for years of service, yeah. So we did, in that policy, it's set at three, five, ten, fifteen, five-year increments from there. Yeah. So, you know, and again, it was a discussion around, that started when Joanne was here, around setting some kind of standard that's in black and white, something that we could use as a retention and a recruitment tool when we need to hire non-union staff. There was nothing, it's just go into a closed room and decide what you want to pay, insert name here, not a great system for the, the environment that we operate in. In my opinion.
In mine, too, because I was here and many of us were here, it was, it was, it was, it was just messed up in a lot of ways. So this is, this was what was proposed and we've been working towards and working towards continuing to execute.
Motion to recommend city approval of the proposed updates to the personnel policy manual per Exhibit A to the city council and to place on the consent agenda.
Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by James, roll call.
Arnold.
No.
Samoski.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Rudehouse. Barnhart.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point four under administration would be the request for, RFP request for proposals for a TIP consultant discussion. Go ahead, you can start.
Okay. So this is, we're going to talk about this for the first time in a public meeting. This is in regards to Edwards Construction here in Geneseo. This is good news, why we're asking for the council to act on this tonight. They are looking at, going forward with the major expansion to the business here in Geneseo. The mayor, myself and other staff have had a number of meetings with them over the past few months and.
Actually, the first conversation has been over a year ago, so.
Yeah.
And that was work on their end, but it's finally got to the point to where we've been able to really go to work on our end to start to look at this deeper.
Yeah, so we met with them just last week and, you know, from what they're telling us, their expansion has officially been given the green light. More details to come, they have to provide us a lot of follow-up to that meeting with performers and other commitments on what's actually happening there, but we're talking about a major expansion of both buildings and a build-out on their property.
Annexation of the entire parcel.
Yeah, their, their current business is in the county, so all of their, it's about nineteen acres in total, would be annexed into the city of Geneseo. It's a big deal for us in the future from a tax standpoint. It's adding additional jobs to the community, also a big deal from a job growth, impacts all the taxing jurisdictions. So more to come as this develops, but why this is on the agenda tonight is because they need a.
Infrastructure growth.
Yeah, a sanitary sewer extension to do this. So in our conversations with them, what we're looking at, the best way to do this and for the city to participate is to look into developing a new TIP district. How we accomplish that is bringing in a TIP consultant that's an expert in this. They'll do an analysis to study the benefit of the increment of the TIP to contribute to the infrastructure for the project. And that's really on the surface right now, the best way that we can see for the city to participate in the infrastructure growth and to hopefully pay for that infrastructure by using the TIP increment process and generating the funds for the project from the growth of their expansion. So the first step in that, though, is for us to go out and we want to go to RFP right away to bring in proposals for TIP consultants so that we can actually bring some costs. Right now, we're not spending any money on this, we want to go out and get those proposals, come back to the council, we can explain them, the kind of work that they would be doing and move forward with this quickly this year to get things moving.
Motion to direct the city administrator to see proposals for the services of a TIP consulting firm and to bring the results back to the city council for consideration.
Motion by Arnold.
I'll second.
Second by Barnhart. Roll call.
Swanson.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Rudehouse. James.
Yes.
Samoski.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I would just add that if any council person would like more information on the, feel free to reach out and discuss. Discuss. No, not necessarily, Derek. No. Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's, there's more to come and there's, there's things on their end, but, you know, I think there, there, this is an ambitious schedule, they would like to get started in the spring if the weather allows right away, so it's a lot of good things here. Okay, moving on, eight point five under administration would be the Hanford Insurance facade grant application.
So facade grant application from Hanford Insurance on State Street. Mr. Mills and myself and the chair of the Plan Zone Board have taken a look at this. There are no building permits associated with this. This is really a really wonderful upgrade that's in compliance with exactly how we have our downtown design manual laid out. If those who can picture the property now, we have kind of a bright blue facade painted with some tan, this is really taking it back to earth tones and is a, is a nice upgrade. There's, there's not any, again, no building permits, the glass is fairly new already, so we're really talking about painting a new awning and a really nice new sign redone up above there. So just another great investment that we can assist with by providing the TIP facade grant, which is, this is exactly what it's intended to do in the historic district.
Motion to recommend approval of the facade grant application of one nineteen South State Street for up to seventy eighty-five seventy-five in fifty-fifty reimbursable experiences, expenses to the city council meeting and to place on the consent agenda.
Motion by Arnold, second by James, roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Samoski.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Rudehouse. Barnhart.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number nine would be the payment of city and utility bills. Okay.
Motion to pay the bills is approved or approved to the bills is presented.
Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by Rudehouse.
Roll call.
Swanson.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Rudehouse. James. James.
Yes.
Samoski.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number ten would be public comment related to all other items. City ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes during public comment. There can be no debate or action by the city council this time. Nothing, Anne?
Come on, Anne, at least half an hour worth.
We'll give you fifteen, twenty minutes, come on, Anne.
All right, moving on.
Motion to adjourn.
Under adjournment, motion to adjourn. By Arnold, second by Rudehouse, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we're adjourned.